I want to thank you all for coming and it's always a pleasure and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Dr. Joe Lewis, who was the Vice Mayor for sixteen years on this board. It's always a pleasure to see you, Joe. Thank you for coming out tonight and I know Ms. Beth is going to get a proclamation. I'm going to ask you to stand up with me.
Great, thank you.
Good seeing you, Jessica. Mr. Carter, it's always a pleasure to see you too, sir. You're still our Senator. We have some good ones here too, but you did a great job while you were there. All right, we're going to go ahead and call meeting to order. We generally start with a prayer and a pledge. The community hasn't taken over us yet, so we still do a prayer and pledge. I'm going to ask, or Mr. Parrott has said that he would gladly do the prayer and once he does, we're going to stand up and face that beautiful flag back here and we're going to pledge allegiance. So, Mr. Parrott, if you will?
If you will, bow your heads. Lord, thank you for allowing us to meet for the good of the community and thank you for our free country, for our military, our police, fire, that protect us, and more importantly, protect our freedoms. Be with us tonight to make decisions for the good of our community and as we live, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for the message.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to be seated. Larry, would you please introduce our State Minister, Mr. Jason Johnson, the Police Officer?
I'd be happy to, Mayor.
We have with us this afternoon, Mr. Jason Jones. He's the Director of EMA here in Tifton, Tifton County. And we had a request from some council members regarding how calls are dispatched and how we respond to them and what better source to get it from than the horse's mouth. So, Jason, tell us how you do it, buddy.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity. I apologize for my informal attire, but I've been out dealing with weather stuff all day. This came to me through the Police Chief, I think Mr. Reiner was involved in linking the two of us up. There were some questions about how we receive and dispatch calls. We get about eighty thousand, we answer about eighty thousand calls a year between the Sheriff's Department and the-
You say eighty thousand?
Yes, sir, eighty thousand a year. And when those things come in, we try to get as much information as we can and as quickly a time possible. The main things that we're looking at is, you know, what type of call is it? Where did it happen at? What's the name of the person that's calling, you know, in case we get cut off during the conversation and we can reengage that person and find out some additional detail. You know, those calls are taken by one of our call takers. That information's then put into a computer and it's sent to the appropriate dispatcher and they read that information off their screen and send a unit. We try to do that as quickly as possible in every case that we have. I pulled a couple of reports from an incident we had a few weeks ago. It involved a shooting down in South Tifton. And on this particular call, we actually, there was actually two people that called, two different people that called about this thing. The first time it came in, it came in as shots being fired. And we received that call at ten forty PM. A minute later, we had generated that call and it had been dispatched. Minute and a half after it was, or minute and ten seconds after it was dispatched, the first police officer arrived on scene. Shortly after that, about the time, or about ten seconds before the officer arrived on the scene, we received a second call about that incident. And this individual was saying that he needed to prepare medical. And we engaged this person. We tried to find out who he is, what his name is, and that type of situation. We received that call at ten forty-two PM and then ten forty-six PM when the ambulance got there. So, about four minutes to give from EMS station to the scene and it began ringing and aid. Now, I'd like to tell you that everybody that calls 911 is very cordial and very concise and very, you know, and polite. Point of fact, that's probably the exception instead of the rule. And I have this particular call on my phone here and I could play it for you, but I'm not going to do that because we're in mixed company. And you would, I'd be glad to email it to you guys and let you listen to it at your leisure to see just an example of what, you know, what my folks have to deal with when one of these types of things come in. But the main thing we're looking for, what happened? Where did it happen at? What do you need? And, you know, within about a minute and forty-five seconds, we can have, we can have somebody head it that way, understanding that, you know, we're not going to please a hundred percent of people a hundred percent of the time, but we sure do try. That's a very quick, just damning and dirty version of what we do about eighty or a hundred thousand times a year. And if there's any specific questions, I would be glad to answer them. I've been intentionally brief because I don't want to take up any more time than necessary. Yes, sir.
Jason, can you explain that there's more than one thing going on with time? Once that call comes in and you and I talked about this, the actual calls received involve the, one that receives a call is taking the information, then the dispatching process is actually, is that starting? Is that correct?
As soon as we get that call in, like I say, we're inputting information into our computerized dispatch system and it's sent to the dispatcher that's going to handle the call. That happens within the first few seconds of getting the caller on the line. And our system is sophisticated enough that oftentimes, especially if we're calling from a landline phone, we get that phone number. We get the person who's paying the phone bill. We get that address. It pops up on our screen. Should we be dealing with prepaid cell phone, which there's more and more of those out there? We don't necessarily have all that ID information, so we have to ask questions. And sometimes people may consider that to be too much questions, but we fall down on the side of us, you know, if it's important enough for you to call 911, least you could do is tell us who you are. So, if you get cut off, we can call you back and try to get you some more help. But lots of things going on at the same time. We don't wait until we get all the information to start sending somebody. Once we know that something's happened and they need an ambulance or they need a fire department or a police department, we try to get those guys en route within the first few seconds of getting the call. And as you can see from this particular call, we had gathered that information and we had dispatched it and we had people on the scene within ninety seconds of answering the telephone. So, maybe we could do it better, but that's pretty good. A lot of things going on at the same time and a lot of people going in a lot of different directions. Any other questions, anything I can?
Jason, we appreciate the good work that you do as the Director. A little aside, we appreciate the fact that you are a veteran and what you did for this country with-
No worries. My pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you for having me. Now, it gives me great pleasure. We have a presentation, a proclamation for the Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I'm going to step down and see Ms. Beth Lewis in front. And Joe, you can certainly come up with her, my friend. I usually like to stand on the side with everybody.
I'll share it one time.
I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Tifton prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our city citizens. And whereas the Tifton County Council on Child Abuse has organized a public awareness campaign to focus on awareness and prevention activities and services necessary to eliminate child abuse as part of the national observance of child abuse prevention and awareness this month. Whereas more than five hundred and six children- Say that again. Whereas more than five hundred and six children in Tifton suffered from some form of abuse or neglect in 2013. And whereas to a national effort, Tifton County citizens are encouraged to join together to raise awareness throughout the month of April for those children fallen victim to abuse and neglect, giving those abused and neglected children a chance for a safe and positive future. Now, therefore, I, J. McCater, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fourteen as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And the City of Tifton, in doing so, urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness and help prevent child abuse and neglect. And then, Beth, I want to tell you, here with the camera rolling, you've been doing this for quite some time.
I am.
And this is a label of love for you. And you have made inroads in this. And I know that your heart hurts just like ours does. We would have to look at you and say, five hundred and six children. But it's just, we've got to stop. We've got to reduce it. And then, this little lady right here, I'll tell you, I think, in fact, finally a child abuse person, I'll put her in the room with them for about two seconds, and we'll fix that problem. But, Beth, thank you for all of your-
Thank you. I appreciate that so much. Thank you so much.
Feel free to say anything.
I just wanted to thank, you know, everyone on behalf of the Tifton Child Abuse Council, the Mayor, City Council, and everyone else that supports, you know, the awareness of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Because just like Mayor Cater said, we had five hundred and six cases reported in Tifton alone, and that's just way too many cases. And maybe between, you know, everyone here and in the community, maybe we can prevent child abuse because it really shouldn't hurt to be a child. But thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
We're going to now have the swearing in of the Tifton Housing Authority appointees. Shedra Miller and Jim Lever. You all will meet me at the front. Shedra? Is Jim not here?
Next to Jim.
Shedra, how are you doing today?
Great.
Am I pronounced that name correctly?
Yes.
That's correct. They took me up there in front. You know, I'm going to tell you like I said, when I first applied for the, I think the first thing I did was I mean, bam, and I tell you, it was something. But it's really great just to see you all that can be out here and be on these boards and help the community move forward. And we appreciate you wanting to do this. I'm going to read this little thing and at the very end, I'll just ask you to raise your right hand. But prior to that, I'll just read it. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton Housing Authority of this city and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed and therefore providentially entered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. And I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the State of Georgia. And I shall also attend to schedule any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. If you raise your right hand, tell me that you affirm what I've just read.
Thank you.
And welcome you to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. You can be working with y'all for a while. Yeah, you don't have to be hard working. So, yes, definitely, you keep up and work sometimes. But, Shedra, we appreciate it. And y'all give her a hand. At this time, we have something that's very special, especially us up here. That is Employee of the Month presentation. If I can make a noise on that phone. I'm going to step back. I'm going to lose fifteen pounds. Get that down. We've got Michael Mittens.
Mittens.
Oh, Michael. Yeah, yeah. How you doing?
Nice to meet you.
And-
Jessica's the one that Jessica actually nominated.
Jessica, you got to play be the old guy though. Well, now, you, I'm going to read this and you can read that. How about that? It's the Employee of the Month in recognition of your outstanding work performance at the Norton Club and Beyond. The Mayor and this Council and City Manager recognize you as Employee of the Month for March twenty-fourteen. Thank you.
I'll try to brief in a little bit. I submitted Michael because I got a chance to work with the entire traffic department during a committee that I started off with a rhythm and riz. And it was a great pleasure to work with him and the entire department, but he shined a little bit brighter. He worked hard. He stepped in when I failed. He was there to pick me back up. And that's what I thought of employee, I think. And I also got to know him and he seemed to enjoy his job. He said he'd been here, I think, five or six years.
Six years.
Six years. And we need employees like that to appreciate what they do and let everybody else that works with them know that they appreciate their job and enjoy it. And it's good to have employees like that. So, I thought that he was a great employee. Even though I don't have any employees, it felt good to work with somebody like that.
Thank you.
I worked with him anytime. He was a great asset. The department does a lot of things that we don't realize that are beneficial to all of us. You know, they do help out any activities in the park. They mow the grass. They keep our traffic lights going. We know if those don't work right, we won't be happy. And what else do you have? They put the Christmas lights up, you know, so. That's some of that. That's all I know. You did a good job.
Thank you. The, we're now going to do the thing we always do. Ms. Ronan would have us all hung if we did, and that is the approval of the council agenda for the month. I'll accept my motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion, second, in further comment. Seeing none, all in favor, please see if I'm raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Ms. Ronan. Now, we have our City Managers update.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Got a couple of gibbons for you tonight.
Thank you for the question. Thank you.
First of all, I know you all are going to find this very difficult to believe, that we are now on a new billing system. And I'd like to personally thank the entire billing department, finance department, customer service department for coming in all weekend. They've been transitioning or doing the conversion to go from our old TBS system to the new, what's the name?
MS Govern.
MS Govern system.
Oh.
You know, we've been working on that for months and months.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's up, it's running, and we've got a little snafus here and there, but for the most part, it's doing very well. And the other thing is that you all will be happy to know that we had a, I say we, Robert Reed Goodson, our theater director, had a call from the Merchandising and Marketing Department for Applebee's. And they have requested that we provide them with a kind of a collage of photographs and historic events of Tifton, and they're going to display this mural prominently when they do the renovation of Applebee's here in Tifton. So, we're going to have a City of Tifton mural in Applebee's.
Great.
For the Tifton Theater.
For the Tifton Theater. That is fantastic.
That's fantastic.
I thought you might have noticed that.
Yes, thank you, Larry. That's a good deal. It is. It really is. People like me that go to eat all the time, I mean, I'll see that, go to the theater. That's super. Have says it, but I didn't have any names. Knows anybody? Is there anybody? You all should like to come up and say anything. This is your council and your city. Seeing none, we'll pass over that. Now, we have the approval of the minutes of the three-three-fourteen regular meeting, the joint city-county call meeting of three-thirteen-twenty-fourteen, three-twenty-fourteen workshop, and three-thirty-one-twenty-fourteen joint city-council call meeting. I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes of three-three-fourteen regular meeting, joint city-county call meeting of three-thirteen-twenty-fourteen, three-twenty-fourteen workshop, and the three-thirty-one-twenty-fourteen joint city-county call meeting.
Second.
I'll motion second in further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please see if I'm raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Ms. Ronan. We now are going to go into something we do called Consent Agenda. And we moved rather quickly through it, but we don't want our citizens to think that we're moving too quick. There's been a lot of thought that goes into this consent agenda. We get emails on it. We meet at our workshop sometimes, twice, to discuss these things. And then we put all this stuff on Consent Agenda and vote on all of it. I'll ask the board if there's any one item or any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to have removed, to discuss separately before we move forward with this.
Item number six, yes, sir, we could.
Okay, we're going to set aside item number six.
It's actually in Johnny's district.
Yes.
You and I have some concerns about that.
We're going to go ahead with the consent agenda. We're going to set six aside. Any other? Okay, I'll accept a motion for the consent agenda less item number six.
I make a motion to approve items two through seven minus number six.
Second.
I have a motion, second, in further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please see if I'm raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Now, we'll take on item number six, the discussion of alcohol beverage license for Sonia's place located at one-sixteen Poplar Street, formerly known as Lila's Bar. Mr. Parrott, we will go ahead and discuss that.
Yeah, we, um-
Or Johnny.
Reason I, I want to discuss this with Sonia's, this Sonia's place, okay, at former Lila's Bar. Man, we had some trouble with that at Lila's Bar over the years, since I've been on this council. And I asked, I think her name, Williams, Sonia Williams, to come in and talk to me about that. Because the concerns were there, there's been some terrible fights there.
Yep.
Over the, I mean, some terrible lockdown. In fact, one fellow is paralyzed from his waist down to, because of a fight that happened at Lila's Bar. Now, and I, I'm not trying to stop her business, but I do think we need to bring her in to discuss with her that we, this would not happen. We will not tolerate this.
Well, I did talk with Chief Dally. He was supposed to have a meeting with you. And he was going to talk with you about that. And then called Sonia in. So, have you all had your meeting yet?
Well, Chief, he, he told, the chief said that he was contacted and also had tried to make contact with she and I, and he and I, and she could meet.
I know that I did call him while I had her in the office the other week, and he was going to get back with her after he's supposed to get.
So, I just, I just think we just ought to table that until we hear from her.
Okay.
We need a motion to table.
Yes, sir.
Because we, it's a great concern, and it's coming from my constituency.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
Okay. I move that we table this for further discussion.
Item number six, okay.
Do you want to readdress this at the workshop, or do you want to do it at the next meeting?
That's probably be a good place to do it.
Your next workshop.
Is that okay with us?
That's April, the-
We would ask her to be present.
Yeah. What would I ask to be changed? We're going to ask that the workshop be moved to April twenty-four because there's a Georgia Railway meeting we thought the council might be interested in. I mean, it is for, it's a statewide transportation-
Yes, it is.
-plan for the rail system on the seventeenth from five to seven. So, we thought you all might want to consider changing the workshop.
That's true. There was two locations, one in Madison and one in Patterson. So, moving now would not interfere with either one.
And that's District eleven meeting, sir, the one in Patterson.
Oh, that's right. That's the other.
This is-
That's right.
For this region.
That's right. That's right. Okay.
But that's up to you all.
Okay. The motion's on the floor, table. You have a second.
And what we're trying to do is, if you're going to table it, we need to get it to go to a date specific.
Yeah, that's specific.
That's why I was wondering when our workshop was going to be. I think that's in our other business at the end here.
Okay.
So, if you think, if you think you want to change it to the twenty-fourth, then maybe the motion can be to table it to the twenty-fourth. Do you think that's what you're inclined to do as far as-
I would think so. Whenever our, whenever our next workshop is.
That's good. Next workshop.
So, we just, in fact, I believe the motion wasn't our next workshop. We didn't give a date. So, is that sufficient, or do you want to do a-
It has to be tabled to a date and time specific.
Okay, so you want to say the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, okay.
Could he amend his motion? Would you second that motion?
Yep, I'm still seconding it.
Okay, so no more questions. I'll call a question. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, Ronan.
I'll let her know.
Okay, resolutions. Resolution providing Downtown Development Authority Amendment to Boundaries, Appointment of Board Members, and for other purposes. Do you have that? Have we gone over that map and the meetings and everything?
Yes, as you recall, we had a rather lengthy meeting regarding the boundaries, well, actually, a couple of lengthy meetings regarding the boundaries of the Downtown Development Authority and the actual structure of that, of the DDA Board itself.
Uh-huh.
The discussion tonight is, unless I've forgotten something, is we're going to talk about boundaries tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Turner?
Well, the resolution that we have, that you have in your packet, basically tracks Georgia law as to the appointment of members of the DDA, the number, how the chairman and vice chairman are elected. So, the resolution basically tracks that, those requirements and also then would, you know, reappoint the members that are currently on the board. And then also attaches your boundaries, you know, map Exhibit A. So, I think we have pretty much, we, you know, talked about requirements of the law as far as the appointment of the members and the election of the chair. And I think really the only issue on this resolution this time is the boundary, whether or not we're all in agreement on the exhibit to attach to the resolution defining the boundary.
So, what we need then is a, is a, is a motion to accept all other in addition to the boundary map. Is that the motion?
You would basically make a motion to adopt a resolution, you know, as captioned, which was includes the attachment of Exhibit, Exhibit A, which is your boundary map.
Okay.
So, if everybody's in agreement with the boundary map, then the motion would be that you would, you know, seek a motion to adopt the resolution, designate the downtown development area to provide, you know, for the election of those members. And then that would carry with it the map. And if somebody doesn't, doesn't agree with that, then of course, make it, make a motion to amend the original motion relative to the map.
Okay, so if I can summarize that. I would use a motion to adopt the resolution. Okay.
If everybody's agreeing with the map.
I, I need a motion.
Motion, second, discussion.
Motion to accept.
Okay, I make a motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
I've got a motion, the second. Any further discussion?
I've got a discussion point, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I still would like to see Park Avenue from the intersection of Sixth and Park down to the intersection of Fourth and Park removed from the boundary. There are thirteen parcels of property in that, that block. Of those thirteen parcels, eight are residential. It's basically eighty percent residential. That, that area, being in my district, is an area that's very much in transition. It can either shift and go to a more of a business setting. It can shift and go towards a setting that's not very desirable, or it can shift in a positive way. You know, dominoes can fall in a positive way or a negative way. And with the bulk of that block being, the majority of that block being residential, I don't see that that fits the business model, if you will find a better word. So, I'd like for you to consider removing that particular block from the boundary.
So, Chris, but your motion would be that you would like to amend-
Well, we already got a motion and a second on the floor.
That's just discussion.
So, this is part of the discussion.
So, he's got to vote, so.
So, we need to vote on what's there. She's, she's made her statement. And then, once we vote on the motion that's on the floor, then we can come back and look at her. Wouldn't that be right?
I think what she's, what she's asking to do is amend the original motion to exclude that block. Is what I'm taking of that.
So, what do I do with the motion that's on the floor?
Well, she would, you know, if she's making a motion to amend the main motion to exclude that block, then, then she would need a second. And then you would vote on that. She doesn't get a second. She doesn't get a second, then the motion to amend the original motion would fail for a second. And then you'd be back on the, on the main motion.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor, she would amend it.
She's looking to amend the motion on the floor to revise the map to exclude the block from Four...
On Park Avenue from between Fourth Street and Sixth Street.
So that's her motion to amend the main motion. And you might ask for a second there, if there's a second to it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll need a second.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is there a discussion point? And we discussed, we had the motion seconded and discussed?
Well, we've had, yeah, you're gonna have to have a second to have a discussion.
On her motion?
On her motion to amend the main motion.
Ah, okay.
What?
So there's a motion to amend the main motion to exclude Sixth and, from Park Avenue from Sixth and Fourth on the boundary map.
Okay, so that, that was her motion to have a second.
That's her motion to amend, that you've asked if whether or not there, does somebody have a second to that motion to amend the main motion? Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I'll open up the discussion. We talked about this for, in length at the workshop. And, uh, I don't wanna get back into discussion. Uh, that's all I wanna say about it.
Uh, the boundary lines. Do they go from the center of the road in, or do they cover both sides of the road? That was a question that I asked and I don't think ever got answered.
The, the, the way the map's drawn right now, it goes from the right away of the road inward.
Inward, so the center of the road inward.
Nice, from the, from the right away of the road, not the center line, but the right away of the road, right away.
So both sides of that street would be considered in the DDA boundaries?
The way this map is drawn, it, it would be the east side of Central Avenue and the west side of Tift Avenue, the west right away of Tift, the way the map is currently drawn. So we're not talking about roads, we're just talking about the, the parcels, the lots themselves, not the roads.
Larry, would you say that again?
The way the map is currently drawn, the boundary line would go from the, uh, east side of Central Avenue from, what was it, Sixth Street to Twelfth Street? Mine's covered up here. Uh, and the south side of Twelfth Street and the east side of Central. Does that make sense?
So let's say we just, that's off here. We were to, well, it, and it goes down the center of the road. So just that side that's not on that, the front houses on the front of the road would be considered into DDA. But the road that we're taking out, or the question to be taken out, it's gonna, both sides of the street will not be, is it?
No, both sides of the street are not in.
Okay.
This part that's in...
These portions?
That's inside the black line would be in. This part that's outside would be outside.
So there's a house on this side of this road right here. That would be on, what's that, Central Avenue? There's a house right here and there's a house right here. This house is out, this house is in.
No, but everything in there is in.
Then there's a house. What I'm asking, there's a road right there that we follow. There's a house on the left and a house on the right. If you're driving up that road, that house on the left is not in the DDA boundary, is that correct? So it goes to the center of the road?
It's in, it's inside, I think of this black line as a similar instance. If it's inside the black line, it's in the DDA area. If it's on the outside of the black line, it's outside the DDA area.
I guess what my question was now is to incorporate, when you go down the street and incorporate both sides of...
Both sides of the road. It was inside the map.
Could it be amended?
Well, I was just asking.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can. I mean, but, but if you're gonna do that, then what you need to do is you need to move that line from there to the, to the next road over. So it'll be inside.
But we're talking about to your face.
Well, what we're, what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm understanding Julie's question would be or, or request would be, she's wanting to just eliminate the houses. She doesn't, the rest of the boundaries are okay, it's just those houses that she was talking, is that right, Julie?
That's correct. That area is eighty percent residential. So why would we proclaim that as part of a downtown development area if it's eighty percent residential?
And all of the current DDA members with this, this recommendation, I guess it's what I'm understanding, would still be...
Still be appropriate to serve.
Still be appropriate for just saving the houses, is that...
Right.
That's what I'm understanding.
There, the whole, all of Park Avenue, and if, and if you wanna go back up, up there, if we go and go back to Eighth Street, there's twenty-seven parcels on Park Avenue between Eighth and Fourth. Twelve of those are single-family residences, nine are multifamily. There's only five businesses. So that is definitely a residential street that could tilt one way or the other. Like I said, I'm gonna use the term domino effect. A domino effect can, can fall in a positive way and, and those, those properties can improve and the tax base can improve, or it can shift in a negative way. And that street being in my district, and I hear that the residents on that street are very vocal and they're very concerned about this. And when you have the, the majority of those on that street as residences, it just doesn't make sense to me to include that in the downtown development area, which is primarily focused on business development. All of the current DDA members are appointed, they can continue to serve. I'm not questioning DDA appointments. I'm asking for a street within my district to be considered residential that's teetering on the edge of tax-based reduction or tax-based improvement, so.
And as I said that night, most of this is rental property. And I, we just have a different opinion as a...
It doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's owned or rented.
Wait a minute, Julie, I'm talking, I'm talking. You don't like me interrupting you, let me finish talking, please. Uh, uh, that I see a significant difference in somebody that owns as well and has four or five different apartments in there than I do a homeowner. And the majority of the places that they are, are not homeowners, they are...
When you're a tenant, you have the right of enjoyment of property, just as a homeowner does. That's their residence, that's where they live.
That's just, that's your thing.
That's the law, Jamie, actually.
Well, no, that's not the law.
You have the, when you're a tenant, you have the right to enjoy that property. You have a bundle of rights.
Well, that's, that's okay, that's, uh, we're gonna do the vote here.
Israel, you want, is that the end of the discussion on the motion to amend?
I just wanna make sure, is that what I asked, that I found on both sides of the road? Is that, both sides of the road, is what I'm asking? You go down that road, I don't think you guys understood what I was asking.
I'm not sure either.
Is there a way to pull it up on this TV? And I'll show you. Ah, I don't wanna get vocal, but I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that I know what I'm talking about. All right, I'm making sure you know what I'm talking about. All right, there's a house, you cut us off, Larry. All right, so you got a house right here on this side of the road, you got a house on that side of the road. This house is not in the DDA boundary, is that correct?
That is correct.
This house is.
That is correct.
Okay, what we're asking is both sides of the street, this street right here. All right. And then there's another road right here, these are the property lines behind this, this road right here.
Let's run this now.
That's right, all right. What we're saying, both sides of the road right here are incorporated here because around there, some front houses are incorporated, and these right here are incorporated. These houses that are in the center, on the side right here are not incorporated into the DDA boundary. That's what, I got the mic, I'm losing all terminology. That's what I'm, what I'm understanding, what you, that...
The, uh, I'm losing the future, where are you? Okay, if you, if you change the boundary line to here, and across, and get back there by there, you take that line out. Everything inside this green line is outside. Everything on this side is in.
Larry, let's pretend that this row right here is ABC Avenue. And we're proposing that ABC Avenue be in the Downtown Development Authority area. And there's a prop, there's a dwelling here and a dwelling here. Are both of those dwellings in the boundary?
That's what we're saying.
So, you see what I'm saying?
If you change the boundary line to North Park Avenue, come down here, this is Fourth Street, come up Fourth Street, get back up to Central Avenue. Take that line out right there. Everything that's in here is out. Everything that's behind that line is outside.
Okay, that's, that's, uh, we've been...
I can't hear all the discussion.
Been, and we couldn't hear yours. Um, so we need to go ahead and...
So the three of them can have a discussion, I can't hear the discussion.
No, he was just asking for the map, and I was trying to see what he was doing. We couldn't put it up on the board. So now, you, you wanna go over and tell her what you just said? It's just the same thing he's been saying.
I was explaining that, making, telling that all current members of the DDA who have been voted in or voted owner or who whatnot are still incorporated. It's just, it saves that road.
It does save that road.
It's residential. That's, that's pretty much the idea of the compromise here. It's just, all of the current members of the DDA would still be able to serve as business owners within the DDA boundary. We're just trying to save this neighborhood.
And it takes out one when you do this.
No, it does not. That, that DDA member...
Off Central, he still has a house on Central. So he would still be incorporated as long as he owns that house. Now, if he says it...
He has a house on, and on Ridge.
And is a rental property, so he would still own a house within the DDA.
Did you say my boy?
Yes.
That's very interesting, okay.
Jamie, I'm just tip the town.
That's, that's Mr. Bird, he's, he's a developer here in this community. You call him a boy?
He's your selection, and he's still on the Downtown Development Authority.
Let's go get, look, I'm, I'm done with the discussion. And, and, and I wanna keep it just like we had the map drawn. So what, what do we need to do here?
Well, right now, you still have discussion on the motion to amend the map.
To amend this drawing, right?
Which was seconded. And so now you're in the process of having the discussion about the amended...
So now we're gonna vote on whether we're gonna amend it or not.
If, if discussion is over, then you can call it a question.
Rob, I will say this, you know, of course, in our, we've already had several meetings to discuss this. We've already whacked out a good chunk of this neighborhood, already dwindled it down. And I know not everybody can see this in the audience, but the red is where it was. We've already dwindled it down, probably a good forty-five percent, if not fifty, reduction already. So we've already done a lot of that.
But we've also extended it all the way out Highway eighty-two. There's been an awful lot of compromise. I'm asking for one block. And it's just interesting when there's discussion about other things and consideration is given for the person representing those districts, that discussion is taken into consideration. And this block, Park Avenue, I don't know how else to explain it. It's, 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 it can go one way or the other, and...
Okay, discussion over. Okay, I'll call for the vote, and this, this will be a vote to amend what's been drawn out, is that correct?
This, what, you're, you're calling the question on Councilmember Smith's motion to amend the main motion, which was seconded, and you're voting on the amendment.
Which, which would change the original drawing that we have.
Correct. If, and if it doesn't, if the motion to amend does not pass, then you're going back to the main motion.
Okay, okay.
So you're calling the question on Councilmember Smith's motion to amend the main motion.
Okay, all in favor of amending of the main motion, please, right, raise your right hand, say aye. All opposed, same sign, raise your right hand, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So now we go back to the original motion.
Correct.
Now, that motion's already been seconded.
It has.
So now I just call for the questions.
If there's not any further discussion.
Uh, about...
The main motion.
The main motion, okay.
That doesn't prohibit somebody, you know, trying to amend the motion, the original motion.
But we just tried to amend the original motion.
Correct.
It did pass.
Correct.
So now we're back to the original motion.
Correct.
We got a second.
Correct.
And I ask, any, any further comments? Seeing none? Uh, all in favor, please send a right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, move forward here to other business. That's Discussion of West Haven Senior Village, yeah, that's, Joe, I'm sorry, I should have moved you on.
No, that's good, that's good, I'm fine, I'm fine. I'll take, I got one more thing I wanna hand out if I can, Mayor, to the...
Okay, Council.
This should actually speed up when I got to talking about the night.
I wanna talk with you briefly tonight, Mayor, and I've got with me Mandy Young, who's gonna have a few words to say after I make a brief presentation to you about West Haven Senior Village. Um, just to kinda reintroduce you to that property, you may know where this is, but if you head out PB Hamilton, like you're going out to the softball complex, on your left about halfway down in those planted pines there is West Haven Senior Village. It's forty units that are income-based for senior housing. Uh, I had the pleasure to work with the company Affordable Equity Partners, who Mandy works with, um, about four years ago, and helping them on that project. And it has been a, a great project. It's really been a great success. We have a hundred percent occupancy.
Right.
We have a waiting list. The residents out there have a garden that they take care of, and ten, they have a walking track that they walk. Um, it's, uh, if you ever get a chance, when you go through there, just pull and ride through there. It is extremely well-kept. I can't say enough good things about it, and that's kinda what helps me stand in front of you tonight. Because what we're really want to do is to expand that and, and literally double the size of the project. I gave you a little bit of information on the first couple of sheets, but if you turn over to page three, you'll see a map, um, that I kinda color-coded there a little bit of that area out there. And the red is the, the location of West Haven Senior Village. The yellow shows the properties that are within the city, and the pink shows the properties that are within the county. What we, and I've, and I've talked with Mr. Wilmont, and I've had some discussions about this, and he's been very helpful, uh, as well. But what we wanna do tonight is to come to you and ask you to take a look at this and to consider a couple of things. Um, what we're looking to do is to have this property annexed into the city, when it brought into the city. And in addition to that, uh, we want the property to be included in the city's urban redevelopment plan. Now, the, there's a, a sheet or two over that, that I'm gonna get you to look at and get Mandy maybe to talk with you about. It talks about qualified census tract. This piece of property is located within what's known as a qualified census tract. And in order to be included in that, you have to have either a twenty-five percent poverty rate, or, there's a couple of formulas, let me see if I can tell you exactly. Or fifty percent or more of the households must have incomes below sixty percent of the area median household income. And when you think about that area, that's not exactly what you think about. But that's what the federal government has determined, is that that property falls within that qualified census tract. Um, what we want the city to consider are two things. Allowing us to bring that property into the city, and also allowing that property to be, to be included in the city's urban redevelopment plan. Those two things will, will put us in a position with the Department of Community Affairs to be able to expand that project, and we have to pass muster with them to be able to get enough points to, to do that. But, but let me stop right there. I'll be happy to address general questions if you have them about the project. But I wanna introduce you real quick to, to Mandy Young, who's very familiar with this project and very familiar with this process, and get her to address real quick the issues with respect to the qualified census tract and being included in the urban redevelopment.
I'll try to be brief, I've not known to be brief, so I will try to be brief here. Just a little bit about me, I worked for the City of Americas for almost ten years, and, um, so I have some government experience, and that's how I actually met the company and I work for Affordable Equity Partners, because on the city side of things, I was the person they interfaced with. And this would be, um, a tax credit development project, no government handout, but no government subsidy, all of the tenants pay rent, we pay taxes, they pay, you know, city utility. So I just wanna make sure you all understand that clarification. Um, the subsidy is actually given to the developer, so it's not, you know, there's no vouchers, there's no government, you know, housing PUD stipulations or vouchers that can be utilized for these properties. for these properties. And the exciting thing for us, and the reason we want to annex in, is because in a urban redevelopment plan, your QCTs are the only areas that actually address a certain housing, affordable housing need in a, in a community. So luckily, we're in the QCT and right beside property that's actually in the city. So I've talked with Joseph and with my counterpart, and said it just makes sense for us to annex in the city, it's the only way we can actually get additional points. The state of Georgia, tax credit applications are a point system, and getting in the QCT area and being involved in your urban redevelopment plan area would, would lend us to get additional points, you know, put us in a better position to possibly get funded, which we would find out at the end of November. We submitted this phase two back in, I think, two thousand and twelve is when they submitted it. I've been with the company for a year, and it was not funded. So, you know, we really, we want to resubmit this application this year, and we're really hoping that it gets funded, about an eight million dollar investment in your community, and occupancy for West Haven currently is at a hundred percent, which Joseph mentioned. So we look forward to working with you all and getting this done, hopefully.
But it's gonna be easy, because this is gonna be built just like the other is.
Correct.
You know, we've already seen the success record and how great it is. What do we need to do, Larry?
Well, I'm gonna talk, I'll let you talk, Rob. As, as I said, currently this is outside the corporate limits of the City of Tipton, so there's actually no action that you can take at this time as far as meeting the guidelines or the, amending the urban redevelopment area. There's a public hearing that has to, there's several steps that have to be taken to get through that process, and my attorneys that are here by record tell me to shut up, so I'll just let them tell you the rest of the story.
No, I've talked with Joseph, I've been talking to him the last couple of months about this, and I think that the only real question is can we fit within the definition of a slum or blighted area?
Or, or not contributing area.
Right, and it's, so what I'd like to do is get with Joseph, make sure that we can fit within the guidelines to make an urban redevelopment area. And if we can fit within that, we're fine, and what I can see is that generally it's the local governments that make that determination, and seldom will the courts interfere with council's determination, and as a matter of fact, I think they never have, as far as what you have determined to be an urban redel, redevelopment area. Doesn't have to be contiguous, you know, it could be wherever you see the, where it might fit and be useful. So the definition of, you know, slum and blighted area is very broad, and I think that we could probably work within those parameters, but I have not grilled down on it, quite frankly, to really, you know, and talk with Joseph to, to make sure we're within those, those guidelines. Certainly, if we're with, if we are within them, then it can be classified as urban redevelopment area.
Well, once, once we go through that, then, then how quick can we make the, do the process of getting this into the city?
We can do that quickly, because it'll be by the hundred percent method. It just means when we can get a public hearing. I'm trying to count my days, Mayor, because it has to be advertised, not less than fifteen days, so.
We've received an application before the twentieth of this month, we could have it processed to where it would go through the workshop for next month, and you would actually be able to vote on it, if, considering everything went smooth, you'd be able to vote on it in June first meeting, that's as early as possible.
Joe, is that gonna be?
Council meeting for June.
Oh, that's best we can do.
That, that's pretty close, but that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do.
Will that not meet a deadline, so that-
Fifth is when applications are due, but I will work with him ever, and the reason why they sent the new kid on the block is because I actually served on the Urban Redevelopment Authority Agency in Americas, so I do have a little bit of experience, and-
We had to have a public hearing on that as well, so this one-
Correct. Just one.
Right, and we just need one for the-
And you can do it at, you know, a council work session meeting.
And when we can, we can approve contention, contentious coming into the city, we can't do that, okay. But we can expedite this thing and move it as briefly as we can, is that right?
I think that you could, you know, at least say that it sounded like a good idea, then you would like to, you would give it, you're okay, assuming it meant guidelines, and then we could move forward with the annexation, and perhaps parallel that with the timing. I'll be glad to get with Joseph and see if there's some way we can-
Can we do that, Joe?
Squeeze a meeting in.
I, I think so, Mayor, and, and you know, what, what, I understand the dilemma of you voting on somebody else's property, I get that.
Yeah.
But I want you to know about this, because we're in the process, and if there are concerns or if there are questions, we want to be able to address them, because there's quite a bit for us to do, and I get with Mr. Wilmot. And we didn't want to get down that road without having heard some of those concerns, so that's why we're here.
One of the things we could do, Mayor, is if we do have a workshop on April seventeenth, we can start the process moving forward with the idea of making everything happen, and then we, that'll give us time to work through, make sure we're on all fours with, you know, with the guidelines.
Council meeting for June second.
Yeah, that should change it to the point.
But maybe we can put this on the workshop and re-present it, maybe everything tied up on the boat at that point.
Sure.
Right. Is that who I need to talk with, please, the annexation method?
That's the man, Mr. Burford.
Any other questions? We're happy to address them. Mayor, I appreciate you giving some-
Thank you all, too, any other questions?
Thank you.
Please answer.
Looks like I'll see y'all again soon.
Thank you all, and I appreciate the good work you did on the floor.
You have a case in your butt.
For work.
Yeah, I keep it in my office.
Ms. Ron.
I think I'm on.
The last item we have here is just to decide what we want to do with the next council workshop.
Mayor, if I may, this railroad D O T presentation?
Uh-huh.
I think it's something that'd be very appropriate for city council to attend.
Oh, I do, too.
And, you know, I've been talking, getting tractor trailers off the roads forever, if we don't have a good rail system, we can't make that happen.
Amen.
If, if there's a consideration to move our council meeting or workshop to the twenty-fourth, it sure would be nice, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got it down here, five o'clock, railroad meeting. So what do we, we need a-
I need a motion.
Excuse me, where's that meeting at?
It's about Austin.
About Austin. It's at the city annex at three hundred-
This is on statewide Georgia.
Three hundred North East Street. So I guess I'll entertain the question to move it to the twenty-fourth, let's vote on it. Okay, if I could have a motion to move that to twenty-four, that workshop?
I make a motion to move the workshop to the twenty-fourth, April?
Second.
I've got a motion, second, any further discussion?